So it goes through these analysis and right now our policy is that when we do the speed study, if the speeds that we record are five miles above the 50th or 85th percentiles, then we will begin to consider speed cushions. Then we'll work through the design, we'll determine whether speed cushions are the appropriate choice, and then we'll go through a petition along the block to make sure the residents sign off, a neighborhood vote usually coming from funding because these are things that we don't typically order, and then we go through placing the order and installing the speed cushions. The quick overview of some of the cases that we have done work on is on the next page. This has not changed from what really a couple of cases were added, most notably 44th Street Ensley and 49th Street North in District Four. So that's basically the same from where it was in November. On the following page after that, this is, we had identified a number of streets where speed cushions were recommended, and we decided that the most efficient use of the money and fairest use of the money was to go in and split the cost with these, some of these streets that we prioritize based on police data, based on long-term need, in order to try to get as wide of an impact as we can across as many districts. So this is kind of a update on where those streets are currently. So we have funding matches secured for Glenwood Street, Westfield Road in District Four, the 9th Avenue 10th Court West project in District Five, and Crest Hill Road I put on there because Crestwood South is voting on Monday as to whether or not they're going to, and I'm feeling that's probably going to be passed, so that's there. The traffic calming working groups, so these are the ones that are, we're reviewing with fire and police before we can move them forward in the next phase, so that includes 16th Street North, the 17th Avenue First Street South area, Mims Street, Brookhaven Avenue, and 20th Street Ensley over in Bush Hills. We're currently in the design phase for 39th Street South. We are reevaluating the work that we did there several years ago with the chicanes, and we're going to be going back in and putting speed cushions, but that's being designed and we'll then go through the process. And finally, we're working on collecting speed studies for 11th Place South and Daniel, the Daniel Payne Cherry Avenue corridors. Just that you don't think that that's all we're working on, you know, because a lot of streets, traffic calming is not all the same. Sometimes they need speed cushions, sometimes they need something else, whether that's stop signs, speed limit reductions, on-street parking, there's a lot of ways to do traffic calming. So you can see, these are the streets that we currently have in our implementation phase. So then the work orders have either been drawn and submitted, or they're, in some cases like Norwood Boulevard, about 50% of that project is done. On the next page, you can see the streets that are in design phase. So these are streets that we are finishing up designs, a lot of them, again, the designs are done, we're maybe tweaking them, some of them, we're just now starting the process of figuring out what's the best solution for these streets. And finally, the last page there is the streets that we have requested speed analysis for. So we, I've spent most of the last couple of months since coming on, taking these 170 cases and trying to prioritize them into bite-sized chunks. I've been trying to break them down into groups of 15, so that way we can really focus, get speed data, get them designed, move on. So that's, this is the first one that's really been prioritized that way, cross-referencing it with police data, with locations of schools, et cetera. So with that, I will take any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Alexander and Mr. Fowler, we really appreciate this update. Councilors, you've had an opportunity to just peruse some of this information and hear these updates. Any questions for our presenters? I'll just start with you, Ms. Clark, I think we have a number. Go ahead.
I just wanted to ask, for one, what are all the different measures? I know you talked about speed humps, on-street parking, stop signs.
And I know on a street, I'm aware of bicycle lanes and stuff like that being traffic calming, but I would think having those speed monitors and, you know, kind of a little sting operation might help to calm traffic, but I'm just saying, what are all the tools in the toolkit, number one? And then how do you study speed and traffic counts? Do you all set up some kind of measuring device, or rely on something else?
So to the first point, it's a little more of an art than a science at this point. It's still in the planning world, it's very relatively new. And you're right, the doing sting operations and speed signs like that are a part of the arsenal. It's really, there are so many different things that you can do, it's really dependent on the street itself. You know, on-street parking is not going to work in a relatively less dense neighborhood because if you're not parked on the street, then it's not effective. You know, the whole idea is to try to, if you're narrowing the travel lane, you're going to make it feel less safe and therefore the driver drives slower, that's the theory. But it is a broad range, it could include things from traffic circles and roundabouts to speed tables and speed humps to stop signs and, you know, crosswalk improvements. As far, yeah. We do, we do have a, and on our website, there is a document that lays out some of the tools that could be used in this process, so that's on our Department of Transportation website. In terms of the speed data collection, we do, we put out tubes on the roads that we are studying and the block portions that are put out. They monitor the speed and the traffic count for a 24-hour period, and that's what we use to then evaluate.
One more quick question. Okay. When, when people are interested in traffic calming, which, you know, the interest is pretty overwhelming, and it takes you all quite a while to work these, and so I think there's been some, some of the, I feel like the 3-1-1 people have sort of been discouraging folks getting in the queue because it might take like a really long time. What is your thought about, should we encourage people to get in the queue even though it may take a really long time? Because, you know, to me, you still get on, in the queue if there's an issue, right?
That's my experience running this program, I would absolutely encourage people to get in the queue. And usually when I get a phone call, that's the first thing I do, is my sort of personal connection with the applicant is go, I hear you, I'm concerned as you are, I know your street is your world, but I have 170 of your worlds I'm dealing with right now, so I need you to understand that you're not forgotten. You know, I'll give you periodic updates, feel free to call me as much as you need and we'll, you know, I may not have an update and you can, you know, obviously I'm here for you to vent about that. But yes, I would encourage people to get on the queue because eventually, as we work through this process and we start unlocking a lot of the backlog, it's going to be more efficient.
Thank you, Mr. Alexander. Any other questions? Yes, Ms. Abbott?
Yes. My goodness, I believe that this is the most popular topic of discussion at all of my neighborhood meetings, and I'm surprised at the small number of streets from District Three that are on this list, which makes me wonder if people are just talking about it and not sending them in to y'all. But I told our police officers one time, if they wanted to increase their popularity, get out there and stop the speeding through our residential neighborhoods, and suddenly you would be the most popular people on earth, of course, unless you caught the residents speeding, which happened to our community resource officer, but we won't talk about that. Anyway, this is, this is just so important to our city. This is like, I mean, aside from the murder rate, this is one of the most important issues is stopping people from flying through our residential areas. So can we, as council members, get the cost estimates for what it's going to take to put these things in our district so that we can fund them? If you can't fund them, somebody needs to fund them because it's just so important. It's not one of those things that just doesn't mean anything, it means a lot to the people who live in Birmingham. And I was, as I was mentioning to Mr. Fowler the other day, I am tired of people moving out of my neighborhoods and moving to the suburbs where there's better control, we'll just say that. So we just need to figure it out, and I'm glad that y'all are working on it, but I would like to know, if you've got a money problem, you know, I'd rather spend my District Three discretionary money doing something people actually want, and this is a biggie.
Absolutely. We are very open to partnering with the councilors on these projects. As a matter of fact, we partnered with Councilor Wood's office with one because the neighborhood didn't have neighborhood officers, and that was a way to, and it was a priority street for us, so that can be something we can work through our Government Affairs Office to coordinate.
Good, thank you. Thank you very much for all of your efforts.
Thank you. Dr. Quinn?
Yes, so very good presentation. In terms of the tools in the toolbox, you know, as Councilor Abbott touched on, and, you know, we do want to see this, or at least I have communicated to Councilor Smitherman that, you know, this is something that we want to see reflected in the upcoming fiscal year 2023 budget as a priority. You know, I've said this in the past, I don't think that I've ever been to any neighborhood, any street, any block in the city of Birmingham where people told me people were driving too slow. So it is an extremely common complaint. On the, the topic of tools in the toolbox, I know that we have employed this in some places, I believe, but the speed detection devices that communicate to the drivers what speed they are going, you know, where are we in terms of that type of equipment? How many units do we have? Are those deployed 24/7? Just, you know, kind of fill us in on, on what that looks like.
I know we have some of them, I'm going to let Director Fowler speak to exactly how many units we have.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
No, sir, I know that we do have those in the department, I'm going to let Director Fowler speak to the exact number of units.
Okay.
We purchased two initially, and then I believe we've just recently purchased two more. One of them got hit by a car, presume they were speeding. And so we've tried to rotate them around, and I just, I need to check with our staff to understand where they're at currently, and so, but we do have a couple of those. I think we might try to, in the future, move away from some that are planted on a post in the ground because they're very heavy. That has caused us a little bit of problems, and maybe move towards more of a trailer kind of a thing, but, so I just need to check on where they're at, but we have a couple of those.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions on this end, councilors? Councilor Wood?
Yeah, I was just going to add, we have, we got a lot of neighborhoods that are very serious about adding speed cushions, so we've been working with transportation for a few years. One of the things that's helped us is getting individual residents that want them to go through the Neighborhood Association. That way, everybody knows the locations and get the neighborhood to vote on supporting that location, and then also at that point in time, we can attach funding, and so whether it's neighborhood or a combination of district and neighborhood. Because like I said, last year, we were able to get $50,000 into a line item to support this type of work, but, you know, that doesn't go very far, and so definitely be either increasing that line item in the budget, or, but like I said, that has helped us move the process a little bit, is just getting the neighborhood to vote, so we have a clean follow-up process, but there's funding attached from the very beginning.
Thank you very much, and I do appreciate the reference to working through the neighborhood because I believe a lot of us have our residents that come through the neighborhood that work with us to get that funding through the council office, so I do think that's a great suggestion. Councilor Protem, and I think Chief has a comment.
Yeah, I just wanted, I wanted to piggyback on what Councilor Wood shared, because we were intentional in this last budget to include the street calming money, but that was intentional to have buy-in from the neighborhood and the council to come together to have one solution because he can't do it by himself with everything else that he has, working and trying to work, especially with paving that Councilor Wood has asked me about this morning. But this is one, you know, like you said, tool in the toolbox that we can all come together to have one solution, but you have to have buy-in from everybody.
Thank you. Councilor Protem?
Thank you. So my question is, just because this is a public platform, how are you going to address, or what's your method for addressing all the cases in my district and Council Williams' district?
Sure. So obviously, those two districts have a high caseload, and so what I'm trying to do is, as part of the prioritizing of these streets, analyzing where are we getting the most police complaints, where are we getting the highest recorded speeds? And from there, trying to put, I'm trying in the groups of 15 to spread them out across council districts, but obviously, I understand that Council, that District Two and District Six have the highest concentration, significantly more. And so I'm trying to put more of them in each of those groupings and prioritize them based on where our schools, where, where's the speeding, and so from there, move forward.
Okay. With the speed cushions, could y'all give us like a half sheet of information, like the pricing and everything, so when we do go to the neighborhoods, it'll just be a little easier explaining than getting them to vote for it?
Absolutely, we can do that.
If that's okay.
I mean, that's, that's fine, I think Colin can explain, it's more than just speed cushions, it's other mechanisms that BDIP has, I know everybody wants speed cushions, but there may not be the most reasonable solution for street calming, so I don't know if you want to touch on that, that, you know, there's certain other things that we can do that's more cost-effective than just speed cushions.
Well, I do think it would be helpful for us to have kind of a one-pager that we can hand out that quickly lets people kind of understand a little bit more about it. And probably what we would say prominently on that one-pager upfront is, you know, traffic speed cushions may not be right for every street, but, so to your point, yes, we can, we can put that together.
Yeah, I know it's not always a solution, but like off of Center Street, going down that hill, they've been speeding for years, so that may be something the neighborhood may want, but thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, Ms. Clark?
Before you leave, and I don't know if we would make this a hard and fast process, but I do like the suggestion that any individual requister get it, get their Neighborhood Association to say that it's a priority for the neighborhood, because everybody thinks their street is the worst. But when you put it into a local forum like that, I mean, there might be others that have higher priority, and theirs might end up being number three on the neighborhood's priorities. And so I just think that's a good way to, to create that engagement with the Neighborhood Association because many, many people aren't, you know, so when we get the complaints, we could ask them to refer it to the Neighborhood Association, and then if the Neighborhood Association approves it and approves some funding, or some, however we would attach to it and partner in the funding. I don't know if we could standardize that, or if that should be standardized, but I just think it's a good idea for many reasons of prioritization, too.
I agree totally. Councilor Moore, did you have something?
Yeah, just wanted to say one thing, I, number one, I just wanted to, you know, thank you all for doing this work. I know Director Fowler actually came out to the Woodline community and actually walked the streets with us because we had an issue on First Avenue South where it is a speedway through our community. And that was through our Neighborhood Association that, you know, we were able to get that, that touch point with him. I do need to kind of revisit to see if, you know, First Avenue South is still in the queue, because it definitely is a, is a concern for us, but I definitely want to, you know, just make mention that, you know, you did come out and I appreciate you, you know, walking the streets with us.
Thank you very much. I do have one question regarding the funding match that you've identified, and so far that estimated total is $32,800. Is that part of the 50, or is this where you're reaching out?
This is coming out of the 50,000, correct. And that has actually come down a little bit from when we presented on estimates in November. Again, depending on the costs of where the speed cushions are, they vary by a couple dollars here and there.
Thank you, and Council Williams?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. What do we have to do to get some, to get a street on?
So you can reach out, you can reach out to 3-1-1, you can reach out to our department, to me directly, and I'm happy to put that on our queue and work through. And I will preface this by saying, the streets that I've shown are not the complete list, they are the ones that are in those particular phases. But we're more than happy to take any requests through either 3-1-1 or directly to our department.
Okay, and so Chaz, just so you know, we reached out on 7/23 of past year, 8/5 of last year, 9/7 of last year, 10/8 of last year, and the 13th of this month of this year, all for Red Oak, which was something that we have not been able to get a response from, and that was something that we reached out in coordination to a meeting that the mayor helped set up. So what do we need to do to get that moving?
So Red Oak may be on our list, so we can confirm that it is. When they reached out, did they reach out through 3-1-1 for those?
No, they were emails sent to y'all's office.
Okay. So we'll confirm that it's on the list, and is there a point of contact associated with it?
With, with the email? Yeah.
So the reason I ask that, so here's, here's what else is important. When somebody, when someone does submit a request, as we were just discussing, it's helpful if we reach out and have a conversation with that requister, and now that Colin is here, some that may have slipped through the cracks, it's better, it's easier for us to get those, reach out to that requister and talk to them, explain the process, explain where they're at in the queue. So I'm not sure where Red Oak is, but we can certainly reach out to that person. So I believe it probably is on our list, we just need to check.
Okay. So, well, the requister would be just to reply to the email from my office, it'd be me and India, so I don't, I don't, you know, I don't know any easier way than that. We were able to, I think India was able to, at one point, get Amy Zari?
Amy Zari.
Zari on the phone, and she indicated that she had no updates. But it is, it is something that's obviously very frustrating for not only the residents that have us physically come out and see people speeding and all that mess, but, you know, when we can't, when we, you know, send six emails and can't get an update, it's also frustrating for the council because, you know, the residents continue to call our office quite frequently, and all we can say is we can't get them to communicate. So anyway, I just want to point that out, and yeah, those are specific dates and specific emails that were sent to you guys.
Thank you, Council Williams, and thank you, Mr. Fowler and Mr. Alexander. Yes, ma'am?
Thank y'all for, you know, the, you know, this layout, because what, you know, I'm, I'm hearing it just seems to be like just so much all across the board. Is it, this is just me, is it, I mean, and I'm pretty sure, I hope everybody else can chime in and say, what is the likelihood of providing a criteria so people can know how the flow of this functions? Because this is listening to Councilor Williams, you know, saying that he wasn't getting updates, and I think a lot of this can be stopped if people were aware of how the process of things flow. I think a lot of this can be, you know, stopped so the, the blind game won't be, people won't be pointing fingers, you know, at each other, because we are here to do a job and do it effectively. So if, what, what's the likelihood of you guys providing some type of criteria so we can, you know, present that to neighborhood constituents and say, this is how this goes, and, you know, a timeline, so people can be clear about what is, what is really transpiring?
Yeah, that's a very reasonable question. I think one of the reasons why we, not just in Birmingham, but just nationally, have not done this a lot, and so we're just now kind of opening the door to all of this, is because it is complex, so it is a street-by-street kind of consideration, and the context is always a little bit different. And so I think that the best way to start the process is for that person that is the most vocal, you know, champion on their street, if, however that makes its way onto its list, I think the best introduction into the process is for us to have a conversation with them, to explain the process, and to give them a sense of kind of what to expect.
Thank you, Mr. Fowler, and as you had said, and I think Mr. Alexander had already stated, is that you all were going to give us a fact sheet and give us some information related to cost and the items that are in the toolbox? So we appreciate that, so thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you all. The next item on our agenda is an update from the Birmingham Jefferson County Port Authority, and we are delighted to have Mr. David Russell here, and I believe he can come forward with the presentation, and Mr. Russell, I know I see members of your board, and if you'd like to introduce them or bring them up, it's up to you, thank you. And councilors, there is a copy of Mr. Russell's presentation in your packet.
Good evening, Council David Russell Jr., I'm going to let the chair speak first.
And you're going to have to speak up a little for us.
Say, good evening, Council David Russell Jr., I'm going to let the chair speak first, thank you.
Hello.
Good afternoon, everyone, thanks for being here. My name is Mike Swinson, I'm Director of Economic Development for Spire, I'm the President of the Board. I wanted to introduce my colleagues here, who are on this board with me, you'll hear from Mr. Russell in just a minute as our Executive Director. On the right is Mr. Jonathan Porter, he's an executive with Alabama Power, he puts a couple hours a week into this thing called the World Games. Mr. Mahari McTeer is an independent financial advisor here in Birmingham. Our singular focus with the Board is to leverage the assets of the port that increase the flow of goods and create jobs for our communities. To do that, we primarily get grant money from ADCA or a federal institute, and to get grant money, it requires matching funds, to have matching funds, we have to have working capital, and to have working capital requires funding, and we consider our short-term funding the most critical need we have now, and we appreciate the city of Birmingham and your support of that funding. Mr. Russell will now give you a more detailed update on the port. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I think everybody should have a presentation in your packet.
Without leaders, as you can see, our Board of Directors, what have we done? Developed a strategic plan and implemented it. The strategic plan really identified the opportunities along the waterway. The Port Authority is a unique economic development entity. We're not just tied to the waterway. We actually can do anything within the Jefferson County footprint. So one of the things we've done as we came together was got the financials together, completed a financial audit, satisfied all outstanding debt, brought the taxes up to date. Then we developed and implemented an audible process just so we can make sure on reoccurring events, because when we apply for grants, we have to have our process and finances audible. What else have we done? We applied for a DECA grant. We don't want just everyone to think that we're trying to rely on the city and the county funds. So we definitely reached out to the state and other entities, tried to seek other ways to get funding. So it was awarded roughly a little over $1 million to start a warehouse project on the warehouse, on the, on the port. We also developed and implemented a 30, 60, 90-day look ahead. This is one of the documents that we distribute to the county, to the city, the stakeholders, the legislators. This is kind of keep everybody updated on what's going on with the Port Authority on a frequent basis. Currently, we're finalizing a ground lease with a partner on the waterway, Waco. Waco is a terminal operator. And just to be clear, all the water, all the land around the waterway is privately owned. So the only way we can get, we can obtain the asset is to work with a private operator, which is a great way because Waco is a P3 operator with logistics and rail transportation, short rail. And they're going to be a great partner with us to kind of develop a facility and they're going to operate facility. So once we get that ground lease established with Waco, we're going to sublease it back to them. And that's what we're going to create, that 20,000 square foot warehouse. That 20,000 square foot warehouse is going to open up the port to new operators and new customers that it currently cannot attract because they don't have the facilities. Right now, they're going to, right now, they're only doing like scrap iron, pig iron. But with this new facility, they're able to attract hot steel coal. And with the new development coming on with Fairfield Works and in Calvert, Alabama, this, this warehouse is going to support those efforts, especially having rail access to that same port and inland waterway. Mid-range, mid to long-range planning, develop waterfront properties, continue to work with the other terminal operators. There's a lot of needs out there. There hasn't been investors out there in years. So Waco has another need to extend the rail spurs, just so they can bring in more rail cars and transport more material. So we want to help them improve the river bulkheads. The bulkheads are the river walls, just to make sure they don't fall into water and the port can still import and export, export material. And doing a market study, this is what the port is really taking the leadership position in the state. So as you all know, COVID has impacted the supply chain. So the port is working with the Regional Planning Commission and Auburn University to conduct a supply chain study on what opportunities exist now and how can Birmingham and the Jefferson County region really take advantage of the opportunities that exist now. Also, we're going to do an inland waterway study just so we can create KPIs. Or Birmingham Port, we're working with Dr. Kevna Daravi. Dr. Daravi is a statewide, well-known economist. He's done the Protective Life Project, the stadium, children's hospital. He was doing the general fund budget for the last 35 years for the state of Alabama. He's going to really identify what opportunities that the port can immediate impact and try to show the city to return on the impact, currently impact of the Birmingham Port along as the inland waterway DECA grant that we got. So the DECA grant was awarded to eight recipients across the state. This came through the state legislator, $5 million. So we're going to really show the legislators, okay, what did that $5 million do for us? What did it, what did it bring? What's the impact? Because we're not, Jefferson County wasn't the only ones that participated in that $5 million. It went out throughout the state and really trying to get them to do a bi-annual or annual allocation just to help the inland waterways. So that was the first time that the inland waterways ever received funding. Then we have the warehouse project. It's going to be the first flagship project. That's actually a rendering of the actual warehouse. It's going to be a positive return of 2% for us, a steady cash flow. It's going to show the other terminal operators how to work with the Port Authority. And we was able to do this because of the funds you have been, you have been giving to the Port Authority, being, the board has been great stewards of it. So we created a reserve just to kind of use that as a match. Because without that cash flow, we couldn't even apply for the grant. We wouldn't have a match to do it. And it was a great match, 80, 20% match. A lot of grants require more. But the state is very lenient and they only need 20%. Then we're going to, through this process, was able to address other issues like flood variance. So something we had to get done. This is the first warehouse that's been done in the last 30 years at the port. So it was a lot of issues that we had to work with the city's engineering department to overcome, to allow for them future developments along the waterway. And this warehouse, like I stated earlier, will support ongoing steel mill in Calvert, Alabama. And it's going to remove about 1,700, 1,800 woods from the road. For you, you all that don't know, you have another document as well. But one barge is equal to 60 to 70 trucks. So and we could use, we could push about between six to eight barges up and down the Locust Fort and the Black Warrior. So you're talking about 420 trucks that could be removed in one single trip off of the, the interstates. And we could definitely ship that through the port. And this is more efficient and it's definitely more environmentally friendly. And this, the timeline of the DECA grant pretty much shows you how resilient the board, the board has been over the time. We've faced a lot of challenges. We went out to bid. We did this post-COVID application for the grant. It was $1.2 million. Then, of course, COVID hit in February of 2020. We shut down in March. Then we went out to bid this past summer and the project came back at $1.63 billion, oh, $1.63 million, which was like $538,000 over budget. So we didn't have those funds. So we had to renegotiate with the terminal operator to really see how can we use these funds? Because the Jefferson County delegation was very diligent on helping us to get these funds from ADCA. So we want to make sure we're using it and kind of create economic development for the city and the county. So with that, it's pretty much give you the timeline and everything the Port Authority has been through just to try to make this project work. And we're definitely in the, in the final stages now of the ground lease. And the next thing will be the sublease. Then the project will be constructed hopefully September of 2022. Then show you about the opportunities forward. It's actually the picture in the right-hand corner, acquire property. That building was one of the, one of the items on the Port Authority's radar. They wanted like a million dollars for it to purchase it. It was prime location, had access to rail. It just got acquired five days ago. It's right, it's right outside of Fairfield. It's an unincorporated Jefferson County. And they're going to do a 25-minute development. But identifying properties like that is something the Port Authority can definitely help with and, and getting grant funding for it to kind of revitalize a lot of these old warehouses and blight removal. There's a lot of warehouses right next to a rail spur, which is very unique and very competitive. Birmingham is in a very unique situation because the port, Enslie Work Site, has three classes on rails and is contiguous to the waterway by rail. Those three classes on rails, one of them is BNSF. BNSF serviced the whole West Coast. So you could literally ship a box from LA to Enslie. And BNSF, and Birmingham is the first east that BNSF goes. So understanding that Birmingham is a prime location for a lot of intermodal facilities, logistics hubs, and we're trying to expand on those capabilities through the waterway. And that concludes my presentation. We need to get some of you all out to the port. Just to kind of see it. I would love to send a video so you all can see some of the terminals. It's definitely live and operating and vibrant, but we can do a lot more to kind of help continue the economic development, create jobs, and increase the tax base. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Russell. And we thank the other members who are here to give us this information. Councilors, do you have any questions or any follow-up? Councilor Williams?
Thank you, Madam President. Well, David, when we had our conversation, there was a specific, I mean, y'all had a specific ask and y'all had specifics about what y'all wanted to see to make this viable. Will you please go over that with the full council? And just council, just so you know, and especially for the newer members of the council, this traditionally has been stuck in the Economic Development Committee and has been kind of kept and controlled in that committee. And I think that we, as a council, have to make a decision, or leadership of Birmingham, so I'm including all 10 of us, have to make a decision. Either this is something that we want to support and do and get behind and actually fund and, and, and have it be, you know, functional, or we need to stop throwing like little paltry amounts of, you know, $100,000 at it, which don't really do it, which doesn't really do anything for the port. It basically keeps it on a ventilator, so to speak. And so we either need to decide as a team, not just in my committee, but as a team, either this is something we want to do or say, all right, I don't know if it's worth it. So I want everybody to understand what the potential economic impact is from it. And I want everyone to understand what the ask is from the Port Authority.
Yeah, so the, the first ask was to just get back to that, the level of funding. Prior to COVID, we were receiving $250,000 from the city of Birmingham. So we will cut in half to $125,000. So that $250,000 will allow us to at least bring in another admin person to kind of help out with a lot of the day-to-day activities and keeping the Port Authority running. But really to have a, like, not to have a full-fledged staff, but to bring in more experts, professionals, like having the ability to contract with a real estate firm, a real estate firm or a real estate attorney to kind of help us with the legal leads and the legal documents of the paperwork to get these ground leases and subleases throughout accomplished. So the ask was $675,000 last year from the city and the county. So about $1.3 million to kind of help us because we're definitely a startup. And having that cash fund, having that extra cash will help us establish reserves. So we can go out and apply for grant funding. Luckily, we have been great stewards of the funds previously. So when the DECA grant came up, we had cash to kind of do, use as a match. But once we use this project, it's going to bring us back. So the Port Authority is putting up 269 of its own money. DECA is providing $840,000, but over the lease is going to bring back $1.4 million along with creating new customers and attractions to the waterway. So that, that 300, that $250,000 that we were getting from the city of Birmingham went to a great use, but to increase that so we could really apply for some government funding. Because right now, there's $17 billion in the infrastructure plan for ports. One of the things we want to do is apply as a CDE for ports. It's $5 billion allocated every year in new market tax credits just for ports. We want to make sure we're bringing in those different resources that the city and the county cannot apply for. Only the Port Authorities can. So we want to make sure we're doing our part. So the ask was $675,000.
Okay. So David, would you please do me a favor and email my office? And we'll disseminate to the, to everybody on the dais, the, y'all's actual budget over the past few years, where all that money has been spent specifically, including salaries, and, and a specific ask in writing of what, you know, what the plan is to do for that. All right. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Mr. Moore?
Yeah, I just, I just had one because I think I may have missed it. So I saw that the ask is 675, right? And did you break down like what that would go into? I think you said like an admin person? Yeah, admin person, it would go into reserves because prior to, our funding got cut. We did have a capital project reserve just for when projects come up and we can do due diligence on real estate property. And we also had a six-month operating reserve, which helped us out during COVID. So just refilling those reserves and having money to really go out and identify and acquire property. And another thing we've been doing, we've been speaking with the land bank to see if there's any properties we can acquire with them to kind of help bring it back online and bring it back to life. There's a lot of blighted warehouses throughout the city and the county. We're definitely, that could be a sweet spot for the Port Authority. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Yes, ma'am. Councilor Clark?
I just had a couple of questions. I know you send your, your periodic reports to a lot of people. Are we on the distribution for those? I'm, I may not be because I'm new here, but...
So the last one was sent out because we were trying to figure out the warehouse status. It was sent out in October. So you all have, the new councilors have not received it. But all the old councilors definitely received it, along with the county commission, all the state legislators. It's about, that list has about 70 people on it.
Okay. And then my other question was about the foreign trade zone designation. I know Birmingham had a foreign trade zone years ago. And there were a couple of warehouses involved in it. But are you able to leverage that to get the designation?
Yes, yes, ma'am. Once the Port Authority actually owned land along the waterway, we just missed a huge opportunity. One of the landowners passed away and his land went for auction back in November. It was 43 acres. They had a 5,000 square foot warehouse, 1.9 million gallon tanks to hold storage, to hold fuel. So you could transport fuel up and down the waterfront. And just to be clear, this water is connected to the Gulf of Mexico. So you could literally go from Mobile to the backside of Enslie through this waterway. So it's a huge asset. And like I say, one barge is 70 trucks. So you, 420 trucks at one time from Mobile to Enslie. We could have used, we could have got that facility, upgraded it, and we could have turned it into a foreign trade zone to kind of help attract more customers that have duties that they want to kind of push off until it's time to sell, sell their goods.
Yeah. So, so I guess I'm wondering, you know, what the vision is overall and how it's going to help Birmingham? Because it's situated kind of remotely from Birmingham and, you know, surrounded by unincorporated. So like most of the immediate job creation might not be people who live in Birmingham. But I guess for logistics, infrastructure, it's going to, it has the potential to do something for us. And I guess I'm just not really connecting. I mean, will it become an alternative for companies who use the port of Mobile to use a closer port? I know the port of Mobile used to come up here because a lot, they had a lot of manufacturing customers who use their port. So are we going to get some of those customers now using that port? Or is that not, is it some other vision?
No, that's, that's definitely very feasible. We've met with a director of drill school from the Mobile Port Authority several times. And that's one of the plans. The Mobile Port is pretty much landlocked. So the more they get in, they have to transport it or like export it somewhere else. And Birmingham is definitely one of those places they would like to transport their goods to. You think about Jefferson County, it's what, 35% of the state's population? So we have a huge consumer market. So under, so transporting goods, consumer goods is definitely one of, would be our sweet spots. And the, with the benefit to the city is definitely creating more jobs. So we can put, contractually, they could have to hire certain people from the city or the county. We do follow a lot of the guidelines. So when we do go out, when we went out to bid, we score higher for small business inside the city, inside the county. We score higher for minority business. So we get those points just like the city of Birmingham does. And we have an agreement with the city of Birmingham to kind of follow those guidelines. So whatever guidelines we need to put in place, we definitely can to kind of support that. But the port right now is generating a lot of money for taxes. If I'm not mistaken, this past budget cycle, there's a 1% tax increase on, on materials and equipment that come into city limits. So by us having facilities at the, by the Port Authority creating facilities for tenants to occupy, they're going to bring equipment in. It's going to be another tax generator for the city of Birmingham.
Okay.
And we could do things that are a lot less costly because we're a nonprofit. So we're not really in for the profit where a lot of...
So when you say taxing on equipment, is that on equipment, sales or just? So that's, somebody from the county is assessing these, these facilities or something?
Yes, ma'am. So we are on the sales.
Avalore. So is it Avalore?
I believe it is. I could double check and get back with you on it.
Okay. Well, that's interesting. I just wanted to understand, you know, how we benefit or the various ways that we benefit from this. And I, and I'm also interested in a field trip. I don't know if, I think we need to see, kick the tires.
Councilor Clark, we did have a field trip about...
Three years ago?
Two or three years ago. And so it's probably a good time for us to go back out there again.
Okay.
So we will ask you, Mr. Russell, and at that time, it was very much driven by economic development. So we'll just ask you, Mr. Russell, to work with the council. And we could get a time and at, work with our administrator, Ms. Kidd, and then we could get times available for us to go out there. Thank you. That would be appreciative.
Okay. Yes, ma'am.
Dr. Quinn?
Yes. So just want to point out for Councilor Clark, that the, the port is directly tied to the Enslie Works site by the short line rail. And the Enslie Works site is 600-plus acres. So if you tie the port to the short rail to Enslie Works, you have some dynamics there that are really unique and offer a lot of potential. And most of that Enslie Works site is not developed. It, it's, it's not a brownfield. So there's a lot of area out there that is open to, you know, being developed where you don't have the same environmental concerns as cleaning up, you know, the old plant that was there. So there are some dynamics. But one, one of the areas that I believe that there's significant room for improvement is on the roadway infrastructure that serves the, the port. And so, you know, this is, this is a long-term project. Yes, we, I feel that we, you know, need to invest in it because of its potential. But we also, I think, need to be in conversation with ALDOT and probably the governor's office, helping them to realize, you know, the, the potential. And part of what would make everything, you know, even greater synergy is having the roadway infrastructure so that you could have, you know, the barges, the rail, and trucks being able to get out there. And when we go on our tour, you know, you'll see that it's a two-lane road, winding in and out. It's not, you know, encountering a lot of trucks with 50-foot, three-foot trailers. You know, it's not going to be a pleasant experience for, you know, your average motorist. So, long story short, whatever we... So, long story short, whatever we can do to assist in having conversation with ALDOT about them investing in roadway improvements to serve the port. You know, I at least am ready to help.
Yes, sir. We appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Any other comments or questions? I do want to thank you all for bringing this information to us. One of my questions was going to be, but you've already said it and mentioned it, is that you are eligible for some of the $17 billion that's in the infrastructure bill. And so I would like to see you be able to get the capacity to go after those bills, if it's through grants or however you would have to go through those. I know that takes a certain amount of work as well to get those grants and get that money. And I'm equally excited to know that if one barge equals 60 to 70 trucks, that's less trucks running across our newly paved $40 million streets. So, thank you very much. I think I do see, we'll let Councilor Tate end us out on this one.
Thank you, David, for a great presentation. I just, you know, I think it's a great project. And just long-term, you know, I'm familiar with ports working in Florida. So I'm very familiar with, you know, people going out and working. What in long, in, in the longevity run, what type of job market on, you know, that you, that you see, foresee coming? And can you kind of, kind of like talk about that a little bit? And like what type of jobs people would have? I know ports, they will have some good paying jobs.
Most definitely. It's going to be a lot of ship handlers, positions open up due to this. But the biggest thing is now that a lot of the OEMs that supply the tier one, tier two suppliers that supply like Mercedes, Hyundai, like BLG is one of them. They're no longer one that is called the just-in-time inventory. Just-in-time inventory, when items come from overseas and they arrive just in time for the car door, the seat, the ride to go into the car. So the store, they don't have any storage on hand. They're moving away from that model because of COVID. And they lost so much money and there was a lot of times they could have been working and producing cars and vehicles when they couldn't produce because they didn't have the, the materials. As you see on the news all the time, they're talking about all the ships that sit out on the water in LA. Well, since they get away from that model, they're going to do a more of an on-hand inventory. And this is where our market study with Auburn versus really going to solidify. So that study should be ready hopefully this time next year. But it's going to, it's going to pretty much show us that it's going to be more warehousing and demand. When, one of the good things about Birmingham is that we're two hours away from Atlanta. Atlanta has like, what, over, it's about 9 million people? That's another market that we could service because from Atlanta to Savannah is five hours, where Atlanta to Birmingham is two. So they could theoretically use our port more and use our transportation mechanism. Because like I said, we have three Class I rails. You can literally ship a box from LA to Enslie. So just having that ability is going to open Birmingham up. And we have every mode of transportation here. We have air cargo shipping at the, at the airport. And they have bonded warehouses, which is huge. And we could do the same thing at the port to kind of increase the attractiveness of the port. We have rail, we have a six, a five-spoke interstate with the Northern Belt Line coming online, probably after our lifetime, but it'll definitely be here. We could definitely get that infrastructure in place. But we've got a plan for the future. So and that Northern Belt Line is actually going to circle the port. So that whole side of West Jefferson is going to just blow up once that Northern Belt Line is, is basically at 459, different 280. So the Northern Belt Line get online, the whole northwestern side of Jefferson County is going to grow by leaps and bounds. But jobs in logistics and they're decent, they're good paying jobs. During college, I worked at Walmart Warehouse and you start off at $18 an hour, which is huge for a 21-year-old. I wasn't eating ramen noodles. I was eating steaks.
And one final question, Madam President.
Yes, ma'am.
Because I'm real big on community agreements.
Yes, ma'am.
Like, you know, when people want to do business, like making sure that you are, you know, giving back, you know, to the community. Like, you know, I have a school J O out there. And making sure that people in those communities are like, be it first for some of these jobs. And then I'm a real big proponent on second chance. You know, people getting second chance employers as well.
Well, bringing in a workforce development program with kind of like Waco, Park of Towing is another terminal operator. They own about 300 acres. They can't find enough people. They can't hold on to them. And the, the kids, and I'll speak from Jackson Hole's standpoint because I went to Jackson Hole. And they don't really understand the port. They don't know about the port. And not having the ability to even imagine working on a barge, working on a ship. And it's not a dangerous job, but you do get paid very well to work on those barges and those ships as a material handler. And once you get to actually steer the ship, you're in a whole different league. Those people make like six figures for sure. So just having the ability to kind of have a workforce development program sponsored by the port authority in conjunction with Waco, because they definitely need to support, they definitely need to help. We can have a pipeline from our own Birmingham City School System.
Thank you again. Thank you, council. And we thank you, Mr. Russell, for bringing your team, for bringing this presentation to us. And so we look forward to the other action items that we've identified today and other steps we can, can to be good partners with you. Thank you. Thank you all.
All right, thank you.
Councilors, at this time, we have two other items remaining on our agenda. We, the next item is an update from the Census 2020 redistricting process. We have Dr. Kareem Creighton, who is the founder of Kremcard Consulting Services. We do know that the registering committee met yesterday. There were several items that we took upon as a committee. We did have Dr. Creighton present at that committee meeting, who outlined for us the guidelines that we'll use, gave us an overview of the process. Can anyone hear me?
Yeah, I just, I'm sorry that I'm, I'm, I was trying to see was the council, what the committee was going to make a recommendation on the port authority to move forward or our next steps for that agreement.
All right, yeah, let's just make a motion to put that forward.
Port Authority.
And could you restate that again, just so everybody's clear? Mr. Williams, Council Williams?
From yesterday's, yeah, it was item 13. From yesterday's agenda, wait, what's today? Yeah, it was yesterday. Yesterday's agenda, item number 13, to push it forward to the, whenever the next convenient time is for Mr. Mitchell to have it on the agenda and give it back to the administration for us to vote on.
Second.
Any questions or discussion on that motion? All of us in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, councilors. So that item will go to the council agenda. Thank you very much for considering that. Thank you. The next item is an update regarding our Census 2020 redistricting process. We do have, and it's Dr. Creighton on the line, just to give an overview for those councilors who, we did have almost a full house yesterday for our redistricting committee meeting. And so we've asked Dr. Creighton to bring that information back to us as the full committee of the whole and just walk us through that process and some of the guidelines that we approved out of committee as well as the process. And we have quite a few documents that we have provided for your use as we'll go through this presentation. I do want to take it this time to thank the members of the Board of Education that are present. As for the public, those nine electoral districts that we will be remapping will also affect the next election for the council as well as the Board of Education, or if there's a special election. So I thank you, President Meadows and Ms. Watkins for attending. I know you also had Ms. Bohm, your vice president, was here earlier. So we've provided you with copies of those information. We'll be giving those to you electronically as well. And we thank you for your attendance here today. Thank you. All right, Dr. Creighton?
Yes, ma'am. I'm ready when you are.
Thank you very much. Again, this is Dr. Kareem Creighton. And he is executive director of Kremcard, who is a consulting firm that we did approve through council action yesterday that will be leading us in this process of our mapping for our districts based on the 2021 census. And so, Dr. Creighton, if you would just go through those items that we went through yesterday as far as the redistricting process guidelines and the population data maps. I don't know if you have Mr. Doug Turner with you on the line as well. But yes, I do see you vote. So we'll start with you, Dr. Creighton, if you'll lead us through this discussion. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Madam President. And it's good to be with all of you all again this afternoon. As the President said, my name is Kareem Creighton. I am a trained lawyer and political scientist. And my life and career have been organized around redistricting. More relevant to you all, I am a native of Alabama. Last time I was living in Alabama, I lived in Birmingham and District 2, by the way. And I've gotten to know the city and obviously I know the state quite well. So it's a pleasure to work with you. I'm looking forward to engaging each of you all in this process. I want to also introduce my collaborator in this project, Doug Turner, who currently lives in Alabama. And I'm going to ask him to talk a bit more, most of you all I know, know him because he lives in Birmingham. I'm going to ask him to talk some about the material related to the maps. He'll be helping a lot with the technical aspects of crafting the maps. We'll both work in concert with the project. I want to keep this on the shorter side because I know you will have many things on your agenda. But I want to at least remind, as the President asked me to do, about some of the materials that were presented yesterday. We, obviously, every 10 years or so have to go about the process of adjusting district lines. That's partly due to federal law, but also our state law in Alabama requires the adjustment of lines. And the power to do that is given to local jurisdictions for local redistricting. Under the local ordinance, as I believe the city attorney has nicely described for everyone in earlier sessions, the mapping has to be done six months after the publication of the United States Census. Because the census was so late this year, obviously, everybody was trying to make adjustments to the schedule, including you all. And of course, the pandemic did not make things easier. But we are working off of a deadline to produce a draft map to be filed for public consideration by February 12. And the President mentioned earlier, it's worth emphasizing, this map will be a map after enactment that will take immediate effect. So elections happening after that date, presumably the ones in 2025 and 2029 this decade, or any special elections to fill a vacancy would be held according to the districts that are drawn. Among the materials that were circulated yesterday, and this is all kind of part of what I would call Phase 1 of the project, to sort of give a sense of where we are based on the census. We know, of course, populations change, people move in and out of a jurisdiction. So we have to know who's in the city of Birmingham. We circulated a district map, which I'm going to ask Doug to talk a little bit about in a moment. We talked, we shared with you as well, data that shows within each of those districts what the makeup of the population is with respect to both age and race demography. And then finally, we circulated a list of recommended guidelines that the committee adopted in, in session yesterday. I think maybe now's a good time to start with those guidelines. And then I'm going to hand it over to Doug to talk a bit about the maps, if that's all right. And I'll, again, not try to go too much in depth because I know you all have copies of this. But we agreed that generally five or six, there's six exactly, guidelines will kind of set the terms for how we do our work. It's a blend of things that are legally required. And there are things that are policy oriented that sort of, in this context of Birmingham, are useful to apply. The first of them is legally required. We have to balance populations. The Supreme Court has given us a general standard that the districts need to be as nearly equal as possible. That works out in our circumstance to be a deviation where you move a little bit above or a little bit below exact mathematical equality. And in this case, the ideal district is about 22,000 people. We have agreed on these guidelines to go about 5% above or 5% below that ideal. And that basically is within the guidelines that the Supreme Court has offered in prior cases. That is, a 10% overall deviation is permissible. We're going to stay again, plus five above or plus five below. The second one is a commitment that we're going to do mapping that complies with all existing law, which again, should give everybody a sigh of relief. Among those laws that we should always be concerned about, giving, given our place in history, but also obviously Birmingham is no stranger to this, is compliance with the Voting Rights Act. Section 2 of the Voting Rights Act, which remains good law, requires us to make sure that we're not crafting districts in a way that would unduly limit political opportunity for any racial group in the city. And so we are going to do the work to assure that, just generally speaking, we don't over-concentrate any particular group in districts and we don't unduly disperse them. We can talk about what that means as we go through it. But essentially, just know that the legal requirements are going to be met in the districts that we draw. The next two I'll group together. They are generally understood to be traditional factors that we should take care of in redistricting. And those are contiguity and compactness. Contiguity just means that we're going to have a district that is whole. We're not going to create an island in one part of the city that gets links up to another part of the city to take the conversation that was just had about rivers. We need to link all of the parts of this district together. Compactness similarly is a traditional principle that says we're not going to create irregularly shaped districts. And both of those considerations are obviously taken in context. We have a city that has certain political boundaries. That is, our, the boundaries of the city aren't perfectly square or circular. So we're going to take both of these principles in light of the existing boundaries of the city. And the other element that is actually very specific to the city are communities of interest. This is one of those places where input is really useful to us. We want to, where we can, respect existing community, communities of interest. And what that means in practice is shared spaces that reflect common social, cultural, or economic interests and concerns. And in Birmingham, I, you've heard conversations about this already today. Neighborhoods seem to be one of those important building blocks for how people associate with each other. So we'll think about how we can respect neighborhoods to the extent that we can. But because we know neighborhoods aren't perfectly equal in terms of their population sizes, we'll have to take this into account with other factors in the process. But we also will, you know, encourage public, members of the public to tell us types of communities of interest that make sense, maybe in certain parts of the city as compared to others. And then finally is a feature that is really important because of the particular circumstance of this particular cycle of redistricting, a late arrival census, a global pandemic, and a city election that had to happen in the meantime. And that is that we are going to craft districts in a way that maintain representation in each one of the districts. So our goal is to avoid having a district that doesn't have an existing representative. It doesn't mean that the territory will be exactly the same because in fact, people will have to change based on, that is, the territory will have to change to accommodate population shifts. But what we are going to assure is that because we have the election and we have members starting the new terms, we'll make sure, to the extent that we can, that every district has a member attached to it. And we won't let that override every other consideration. But we think we can comfortably accomplish that in light of the other principles that we know are required by law and that are elsewhere mentioned in the guidelines. So that's sort of the rundown of the guidelines. We can talk more as we go forward. I'll talk a bit about what that means. But now it might be a good time to hand it over to Doug to talk a bit about the maps. And after that, I'll come back and say something about the next steps forward. Doug, can I turn it over to you, please?
Yeah, sure, absolutely. Thank you. Good afternoon. Good to see you all again. So I, yesterday, many of you were with us. And printed maps there were distributed. These are of the existing districts, the boundaries of the existing districts. I understand from a text from Mr. McDaniel now that the link is going to be provided online so that you can see these in greater detail. We went through, there's, the, within the city of Birmingham, there are about 9,500 census blocks. And, and what that, what a census block is, is that basically every square inch of the state, the country, is in one and only one census block. And each 10 years, they, they alter the geography of those. So in putting together the, the current boundaries and allocating those 9,500 blocks to them, there, there were some that crossed boundaries. And, but we, not that many. So we did the best fit here to, to come up with the, with the current populations, which also were provided both yesterday, and I'm assuming these four pages are there, that showed that, you know, there were 20733 total people in the city of Birmingham as of April 1, 2020, which is the relevant date here. A perfect district then would have 22,304 people. As, as Dr. Creighton mentioned, the derivation here that's, that's generally used is, is a... As Dr. Creighton mentioned, the derivation here that's generally used is a plus or minus 5%, so overall 10%. So a district that's either, you know, less than 105% of the ideal, or that is greater than 95% of the ideal. We have quite a few districts that either need to shift population to another district or receive population from a district to have each of the districts back within the plus or minus, the plus or minus 5%, which is the 10% overall deviation. That's applied to the population. Again, I think having this link to the online map, which is in such detail that you literally can search for a house in it and find where it is, will be helpful, maybe more so than the printed versions that you had yesterday. It also shows on it the splits in the current neighborhoods. And again, those neighborhoods themselves were not drawn using the 2020 census blocks, which is the way we'll have to construct the council districts. So while taking those communities of interest into account, we will have to base this upon the 2020 census data, because it's the only way that we know what the population is. Only, so for each block, it, there is a report of how many people live there, based upon race, based upon voting age, and based upon ethnicity. So that's what we have to have to make sure that the numbers that correspond to the final map are correct in those parameters. So that's my quick view of it, and I'll turn it back over to you, Kare.
Thank you, Doug. So we just described collectively, basically Phase 1 of this project, to get a sense of where we are. You all have documents now that sort of reflect pretty much the picture as it looks today. And our goal is to move from that picture to a map that barely reflects what was going to be the world for the council and the school board for the rest of the decade. How do we get there is the question. So taking these documents as a starting point, what I would, wanted to propose is sort of a general work plan with guidance, of course, given by the council and the committee, is a sort of next phase where we allow you all time to kind of sit with them, with the materials, and then have an opportunity to have a discussion with Doug and me about sort of how you're viewing it, based on sort of the shift that needs to happen. And most of the districts will involve some type of shift in population. Where that shift happens, how much of it happens, is what will be kind of the subject of the work that we do. And so we want to propose a sort of Phase 2 to be a process that gets you all in a, you know, conversation with us about kind of how you all are looking at it, so we can share with you potential ways that one might address the changes that we think have to happen in order to comply with law. If we could successfully get through that in the next week or so, I think it's possible for us to craft what I'm going to, for the moment, call a first draft for visualization by or about February 1st or so, and if not sooner. And if we take that time at February 1st or so as a marker to say, we've got about, you know, 12 days, roughly two weeks if we do it right, to produce a final map, that can be a period of time where we can engage the public in a more concerted way in how much and where. I want to obviously take your guidance in order to get some feedback and give a sense of how, if at all, the sort of visualization needs to change to get to a final draft. And obviously, we've agreed that the law seems to direct us to have a final draft on file and ready for formal consideration by February 12. So on that timeline, we are pretty confident things can work out. It would be helpful for me at some point to get your input and guidance about, again, beyond individual meetings with members, how much and when the public engagement portion of it needs to happen. But that's kind of the overall picture, more than happy to answer questions, but I hope I've given you a sense of sort of where I see things going. And obviously, throughout all of this work, Doug and I, who've worked together on past projects, will be available to engage, and we work in tandem quite well. So I'm not currently in Birmingham, but I'm more than happy to be there in person, to the extent that you all need it. But that's kind of the overall picture of where I think the process is going to lead with your guidance. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Dr. Creighton and Mr. Turner. We do appreciate the information that you shared with us today. So I want to open it up to counselors, if you have any questions or need any clarification before we consider approval of the guidelines for the redistricting. Any questions of Dr. Creighton or Mr. Turner? Having none, counselors, you do have before you the proposed guidelines for the redistricting process. That was, those were approved through committee yesterday. So do we have a motion for approval of these from the full council?
Some of.
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much, counselors, and we thank you, Dr. Creighton and Mr. Turner. We will be working with each of the counselors to set up these opportunities, to have these working sessions where we can work with the consultants on looking at those variations of those maps.
Madam President, just a comment, you know, with our, with the consultants being paid what they're being paid for this amount of work, I do expect there to be a physical presence.
Oh, yes.
Here.
That is already.
Not just about, this isn't a work-from-home project.
Oh, no. That, we've already talked with the consultants, and we have agreements on those times. So thank you. Thank you, Counselors. Go to the next item. There's some candy down there, so he can be sweeter. Okay, the next item, and our last item, counselors, is an update on, excuse me, counselors, is a review of the National Flood Insurance. They want to bring us an update from PEP, and so we have Ms. Paige Ishma, who is the Senior Planner, and thank you, ma'am, for bringing us this update.
Hello, can you hear me okay?
Do you got to talk just a little bit?
Okay, can do.
Madam President, before she starts, what happened to our Plexiglas box that everybody was in? We could at least hear when they took off their masks, and now I can't understand just about anybody.
Well, it, from yesterday, there was the concern that you couldn't hear, and there was the thought that to remove the Plexiglas, it would give you an opportunity to hear better.
No, it didn't work.
So we'll just ask you, please speak up. Thank you.
Okay, do my best.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Paige Ishma, I serve as Senior Planner under PEP here at the city of Birmingham, and I'm also the Community Rating System Coordinator. And as some of you might know, so the city of Birmingham is, has participated in FEMA's National Flood Insurance Programs Community Rating System Program for many years, since 1993. And as a part of that program, that, it's a voluntary program the city participates in that says, we will go above and beyond the minimum FEMA, I guess, requirements for flood mitigation and educational outreach efforts to our citizens. And because of the efforts of the city, we have achieved a Class 5 rating, which allows us to offer a 25% discount on flood insurance to our residents and businesses. And part of our educational outreach in, in order to remain compliant in that rating system, we developed a program for public information, which we called the PPI document. And that's a document that really just guides our educational outreach efforts and programs. And that was adopted by city council back in 2017, and is as a part of FEMA's requirements, so we remain compliant. We have to review, update, and re-adopt that document every five years. So that is now January of 2022, which is why we've now brought it back to council for review. And I'm happy to take any questions on.
Thank you, and counselors, just for your information, you do have a copy. The last two pages of your packet includes a copy of the draft resolution that outlines what will come before us. Any questions about this particular item? And I do believe we're on a timeline that this has to be in by a certain date.
Yeah, January, January 31st of 2022.
Yes. And one of the things that they look at is a resolution like this affects the rating of that program?
Right, absolutely, yeah. In order to maintain the rating, we would have to have the resolution adopted on time.
All right, thank you, Ms. Clark. Yes.
So I know there's a delineation, like, in our mapping system of floodplains, and it's like the 100-year floodplain and some other designation, but it seems like we have those 100-year rain events, like, every other day, every other week. Have those flood maps been updated based on recent weather patterns? You know, because some areas that are designated floodplains don't seem to flood as much anymore as infrastructure and other things have happened, but there are other, I mean, some areas have always flooded, but, but there are new, like, flood areas now.
Yes, yes.
And do the maps, I mean, are the maps, how often are the maps updated?
I believe they're updated annually.
Annually?
Mm-hmm.
So they keep up with this new weather we're having?
Yes, yes.
Kind of, okay.
Yeah, we get all that information directly from FEMA. They send us the updated maps, and then we incorporate it.
Okay.
Thank you. Great question. Any other questions, counselors? All right, thank you very much. This particular item, counselors, will be a resolution that will come before us that we would need to consider, and we're hoping, Chief, are we putting that on the next agenda, or what is the timeline for this?
I just emailed Ms. Bernard to see if it was ready, and I hope, because we have 30 minutes left to make the deadline, we should go ahead and submit it for this Tuesday's agenda.
All right, thank you. So do we need to take any action to recommend this, or just we'll see it on our agenda? Would you like to make a motion?
Do we need any more?
Do we have to? Chat.
Motions are good.
Motion for chat is for.
Madam President.
Any questions? Yes, ma'am, Ms. Abbott. Hold on, y'all.
Is, excuse me, please.
Sorry.
Is Page 1 all we have? And what is, I mean, I've got a Page 1 for this.
Right, and then we have the other CRS coordinates manual.
Here, I've printed up the email.
There is a 50-something page document.
I didn't.
And we've provided that to you through a link that gives you more information, but just to answer the question about the resolution, is this the full resolution before, is the draft, or this is still working document, or is it?
Yes, I think that's the full resolution.
All right. And again, there is a 54-page document that, I think you say you've already printed it out?
Yeah, Ms. Abbott has, I think permanently I will, I will give it to her to review, because I've already reviewed it, and it's all kind of.
I'm very impressed, thank you.
And again, that link has been sent out to all the counselors.
But could you print it on punch, three-hole punch paper next time? So that I can put it in a binder?
Yeah, man.
Save it for the next 15 years.
It's about $160,000.
Thank you, Ms. Ishma, we appreciate you. Counselors, we do not have any old or new business, and so at this time, we'd like to entertain.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, counselors, the committee of the whole is adjourned.